Roll call, Ms. Ms. Goldman to determine the forum.
Ms. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
There you have a point.
Thank you, that is standing by your station. Heavenly Father, we give thanks to you for bringing us together for another opportunity. You have told us in your word that if we seek you first, all other things will be added. And we are seeking your will for compassion and love for our community. These blessings and others we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Salute, blessed, I bless you with the right. To the world, to the people who say, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, comments as it relates to items on the agenda?
Good evening, Ricky Anderson, Bachelor of EPM. Item number four, discussion budget. My representative is not here, I was gonna ask him about the budget. But someone on the board explained to me what budget are you intending to talk about? And be specific? And what you're gonna talk about the budget? What I'm trying to say is, it's not specific on here. And I believe when you asking to talk about something specific, it should be brought out. Now, can someone elaborate on that?
I can slightly, but Charles, if you can enlighten more. I think when Mr. Bradford made the motion, he specified what what he wanted us to talk about today. Somehow it needed to put on an agenda.
Okay, and with that said, Mr. Diddy Green, I believe that if you continue on as the agenda is printed, I believe that you're not being specific.
I agree.
So if it's all possible, let's correct this before we go any further. Because if we do go further, we'll be committing a sunshine law act, open reading act, and also possibility of committing malfeasance. So let's correct this before we discuss anything about what specific budget. Now, if it's for a fiscal year budget, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, it should stipulate that. Matter of fact, let me ask Mr. Bradford, did you file a petition to the clerk and represent to putting this on the agenda, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay, can you tell me, and this board, what did you file was not a petition?
Okay, I have here, I request a special meeting according to section fourteen of the city charter. Set twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget for the city of Bradford on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty in the courtroom here at City Hall. Note, mayor, clerk, mayor, clerk, ah, court, and treasurer, be prepared to discuss and update the council on the status of the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and provide each council member with a copy of the budget.
And with that said, ladies and gentlemen, I attempt to correct this error.
Thank you, can I make a motion?
Um, I I make a motion that we correct.
Yeah, I say it.
Judge.
Okay, do we, are we correcting or are we expanding the agenda to encompass?
I think by it being on the, I think if by it's already been on the agenda, we just gotta make the corrections.
The correction.
Okay.
That is his request.
You're right, the agenda should re-ask his request.
Okay.
But the agenda was clear.
Specifically?
I think he made the, when he made the motion, um, last meeting, uh, stipulated what he wanted to speak about. You know, somehow, you know, we, someone's got agenda late yesterday, and we just ran across the error yesterday. So in order for us to speak about it, we need to make the corrections now, then move forward.
Oh, we have a motion to correct the agenda. On a second, motion by?
Ms. Andrew.
Mrs. Tappin, and second by?
Mr. Green, Deacon.
Mr. Deacon, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Also too, with, I guess I could chime in, with his request, we supposed to have a copy of the budget, or something related to the budget in our package? It's hard to kind of speak about it. I guess we could be all over the place, but as of now, we don't have that budget in our hands at the moment. Well, I know, I can't speak for everybody else.
Thank you, just wanted to meet and reflect what he requested, so. And he requested that we have a copy of the budget. And we be, and he requested to be, he was really specific in his request, so let's honor his request.
We, we certainly would be glad to honor the request if we had a budget prepared. But at this point, we do not have a completed budget to to hand out. And to hand out something that is incomplete would really not be fair to anybody sitting on this panel.
Yeah, I agree.
I, but I will, if the mayor let me speak.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bradford. I think we also update where you all at with the current budget. I mean, we are two weeks out before you're gonna come before this council and ask us to sign their budget. We the council should have the right, and I think just can you add it to no time when you make the request that you all bring something? I know you got something done. You don't have nothing done today, you're two weeks out, you're not gonna have anything done by the thirtieth.
I agree.
I mean, and then you can't give us the council a budget, uh, that it take you six weeks, six months, or however long it take, and expect us to make a decision overnight, and the next day before, that's unfair to the council, that's unfair to the department heads as well. Because it's, this, I was hoping that you had something, least tenement that you can show what you were working on, or where you, where you were, for if any of the department head wants to have some input on the budget. And I think the fire department, as well as the police and other department head should have a little input on this budget. Because we have been going back and forth on what are we gonna do for raising, what do we have to do for raising? What we have to bring, uh, police officers and fire officers, like fire, fire numbers into, you know, the rate. We, we, we kicking a can down the road, we not having any theme decision. And we're no longer the discount zone, they gonna operate in the dark. We, we can't be, we can't do no due diligence to our department, our community at all. If we don't know what we are voting on, or what's coming before, maybe one or two people may know administration. Well, let me tell administration something, you report to this board. Board don't support to administration. I think we got it backwards. And if we gonna be on this board and making the best decision for our community, our city, I think we should have some input. By the way, the charter says the board in the ultimate have the responsibility of the finance and the carrying of this city. Now, he gave me a charter, I don't know if you're about to read it. We have responsibility, that's all we ask, we not trying to be radical to them. We, we just owe our community a better. You know, we, we, this board here is one of the best board that will be in the history of BASH if we all work together. What you say, we're better together, I think this is what it is, or we together? Uh, well, let's get together and let's share information with the board, where we can all have input on what's going on around us. You know, let's not be so secret and sticking thing, force enough to sign thing. I think we don't, unless, unless stated by the, uh, June thirty, I think we may be required by law, uh, to, to sign that budget, and, and that, that'd be sad, excuse my phone. But that, that's a sad situation to put the council in, he put the community in. I, I'm, I'm just, um, concerned that we do the right thing by all department heads and move our community. You know, we got a good council.
Okay.
You know, and I think this, this is a spur of the council. And we don't want, we don't want to fall short and say, well, they had African American council for the first time, and they, and they, and they, they trumped the city. That's not true, well, I think everybody up here, even with the mayor, we are intelligent to do what we have to do for this community. And I, I wanna see it done like that. Now, I mean, you hear me, I think.
I have no question.
Just one, one at a time, let me announce the speaker. Who, whose voice, did I hear first?
Ms. Andrew.
Okay, Mrs. Tappin.
Do we at least have the amount, the projected amount for the police department budget, as well as the fireman budget? At least a projected amount?
Okay, let me get all the questions in that way.
See, there was.
Ms. Tappin.
I'm sorry.
Projected amount, okay, Mr. D. Green?
I, I think the concern last meeting, uh, Mr. Bradford talking was for us to be better prepared with, with signing the budget. Meaning that we should meet, uh, get our package a day before the city council meeting at, uh, then the city council meeting asking us to sign the, the budget when we haven't properly went through it. So our plan was for this council was to meet every so often, up until the point to sign the budget for us to properly go through the budget. And this here today is kind of delaying one week of us not going through the budget.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jay Green?
I concur with his, with his assessment, because it's not fair to bring a budget at the last minute and have us to sign it when we already know that we in a crisis right now. We looking to ways to amend the budget, and if we see something we don't like, we wanna have time to get with you and discuss it. Because right now, we in a shortfall in different departments. And we as a board probably feel that we can cut somewhere else and, and try to do a little bit better with what we have, with our resources. But to come in two days before and say, y'all just signed this and, like Mr. Bradford alluded to, y'all had six, five or six months to work on the budget, you want us to have twenty-four hours to do it. That's not fair to the constituents that we serve. The only thing we ask is give us ample amount of time to look over the budget and see what we think is fair, because we are the stewards of the money. So let us look at it and determine what we think we should do in order to move the budget forward.
I have a question too, um, Ms. Andrew, if, uh, next month meeting, if we, if we don't agree on where the budget is, do we have to sign it that day?
No, sir, the budget is set to, 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 I mean, on June thirty, I mean, to do it on the June thirty.
But it's not, it's, we don't, we can also have a little more time if needed?
Well.
You wanna chime in, David?
The law says that you can, if you pass the budget, spend half of the money.
Let, 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 I'm sorry, go ahead, no, 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 let me just say, I couldn't hear what you said.
I prefer that a lawyer take.
That ain't our lawyer. See, we, we can go here and now, I, I appreciate you.
Wait, wait just a minute, wait just a minute.
We start there, we gonna be able to give it to pay, and we not gonna pay. And I think we didn't, we didn't, we didn't cross that bridge, now let's take it to budget.
Ms. Andrew, would you, I know you have to, to leave. Would you like to come and speak in terms of, um, any of the statements that have been made up here?
Uh, I think, like Ms. Andrew said, those are all the questions.
Okay.
I, I didn't get that, I'm sorry, I wanna ask one of the question, should I get the clear, right? I understand, Ms. Ms. Goldman, Mr. Green asked you, is it, do we have to sign this budget by June thirty by law? You've been around long enough to tell us that, we don't need a lot, yes we do?
We should pass a budget.
By June thirty, or will we be in violation?
Before June thirty.
Before June thirty, okay.
Before July one.
Will, will we, will we be in violation if we don't?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Steve, that's what I'm talking about. We, now, now, we're held, this council is held prison to, this, this shortfall, no, the budget not being prepared, uh, but you can't give us a update, we can get put, well, we've been held prisoners, you know? I hear last year, I went on the council, I hear last year, you brought a day before, uh, it was due. That's not fair to anybody. Well, I mean, we can do better.
Oh.
I don't know, I'm not fussing, but I'm, I'm just saying, let's do better, let's try to, we, we two weeks out. Any way possible that you and whoever, who are preparing the budget, you and?
I work with the mayor and all the, all the department.
And all the department here, have they submitted you anything so far?
Yes, we have been in dialogue.
Okay, can you update the council then with your dialogue?
Let, let me say something.
Sure, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, before Ms. Goldman, I was trying to get all the questions out of the way. Was any other, were there any other questions? That you wanted to pose, so we can, uh, address all the questions?
Um, not a question, just a statement.
Ms. Tappin.
Yes, ma'am, preparation is the key. And I know last, this last fiscal year, we had a lot of shortfalls, things I know was stated, we couldn't pay because it wasn't in the budget. And we just need time to prepare, because we, we wanna make some good decisions. We, we don't wanna just half step on our community. And we need time to prepare.
Okay, now where, where, let me ask this question, where did the shortfalls come from?
Well, I know when civil service came up, you said that the lawyer couldn't be paid because it was out of the budget.
Okay.
We didn't, we need time to look at all of those line items. Because, you know, that's certainly something that probably needs to be looked at. So that was one in particular that I remember.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can, uh, the previous administration?
Can we chime in on it, since we talking about budget? Would there be something we can speak about that civil service attorney being paid? And I, I, what part of the budget, 'cause we are, 'cause right now, we just got, we'll be correcting the budget.
I, I think when I answer this, Mr. D. Green, that may offer some clarity. The budget that I inherited from the twenty-one administration, when I assumed office, had six hundred dollars in it, in that line item for civil service. That was not mine, under my leadership. That was what I inherited, that was, those of you who are on the board, that was what you agreed to put six hundred dollars in that line item. Okay, so that bill started to, and just hold your thought. That bill started to exceed that in an exponential number. And the civil service board acquired my law, though I know what the law states about that. But they have to be within the local budget act. And I checked with, uh, with the state on that as well. That was what was allocated, and to pay something that exceeded that line item, I didn't have the authority to do it, nor did this board did, do have the authority to pay. The bill ended up being nearly fifty thousand dollars, which was six hundred dollars allocated in. And that was in the local budget act. Now, given the situation that, um, that happened, and I'm not trying to run from responsibility, but that, that is the reality of it. If you cut a check for that, fifty thousand dollars, matter of fact, bad news told me that would have been violation of the local budget act, attorney general said that they had to operate within the local budget act. And to make sure that that money was allocated, it was not there.
So in other words, in other words, they, the civil service, um, they gonna open their budget. Also too, they didn't, did they follow protocol by going get an attorney?
They could get an attorney, but they had to comply with, excuse me, Mr. Green, they had to comply with the local budget act, and that came from the attorney general's office. I talked, I talked to them, they sent me a letter, I think I gave each one of you a copy of that letter. They had to comply with the local budget act.
I got, I just couldn't point out the information.
Okay, Mr. Jay Green?
When you stated that, it was on the six hundred dollar line for the budget. So therefore, they went over the budget, and therefore, you didn't, they, they were out of their jurisdiction when they went over the budget.
That should have checked anyway.
Well, I'm, that, that's, that's the point I'm making. So if you, if that applies to that, this should also applies to the attorneys when we make our budget. So if we set X amount of dollars that we only gonna allow, when you go over that amount, you gotta come before the board in order to, that's what you just, I mean, if I'm, if I'm correct, that's what you just stated.
No, that is not what I just stated, Mr. Green. What I said was what was allowed in that civil service line item was six hundred dollars. That's what I said.
Well, who put it in, who?
I didn't put it in there, I think that was prior to my administration.
But I'm saying, the council voted to put it.
Yeah, the council voted the last time.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at, so if the council voted to put that in there, when we get ready to do the budget, that's ring, that's ring that we need to see the budget, we ahead of time. So we can, uh, only allot the amount of money that we feel appropriate, we can come up with figures. And if you go over that figure, you have to come back before the board. That's the same method applies to the civil service board, that's what I'm referring to now. You said that they didn't go, the, the board, the board allotted, uh, allotted, right? So that's what we can do with the attorneys. We set a, set a amount, and if you go over that amount, you will be in violation, just like they was in violation. Unless you come back before the council and ask for us to, to, to up the salary, up, I mean, up the pay, or whatever we need to do.
Okay, so let me see if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Jay Green. Are you saying that, well, in any way, the operation and administration on a daily basis need to come back and make, and call you all back? To make decisions that, on day-to-day operation?
But mayor, you know, you know, you know, you know, I'm not saying that, only thing I'm saying is.
I'm trying to get clarity.
You, what, I can give you, I can give you clarity. I am saying, it's our responsibility as steward of the money. I'm saying at the beginning of the year, just like we doing now, budget. We budgeted, you said it earlier. Once you, once you set the budget, then when we get ready to say something, you look back, matter of fact, two council meetings ago, you say, hey, y'all already allotted that, you can't do nothing about it. So what I'm saying, to prevent that in the future, we just come up with a number, and we can all agree on a number. And therefore, once we sign this budget, we already know what's gonna be, what's gonna be the consequences down line when we come, when it comes up. You gonna say, well, it's gonna be said that, hey, it's, y'all already approved it. So what I'm saying, to stop that, and, 'cause, you know, some things we don't wanna pay, just to be frank with you. So we, what I propose is, doing this, get us the budget, let us look at it. And if you got extra numerical figure that we think is way above what should be there, we wants to be able to drop the number down into what we feel is a fair number. And if you just happen to exceed that, then therefore, you would have to come back before the board. I'm not talking about day-to-day operations, now you know I'm not referring to that. Because the money, matter of fact, we had two or different attorneys, we done hired somebody else for, uh, environment that wasn't, wasn't supposed to be in the budget, so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, also too, mayor, I, some of our concern is, is going forward, just like the civil service attorney, going to see, you know, the six hundred dollars, uh, how they will get paid, as well as, because if we go to practice and procedures, they, how they, how they purchase that, or went about getting a lawyer out of practice, or procedures? It's just as well as how Mr. Jones got it paid, he didn't get approved by this board. So what we trying to figure out, how, how is he getting paid? Or who, you know, how are we paying him if the board haven't approved him? So going forward, we need to know these things, and hence why we need to have these meetings waiting for the time to sign the budget. Because if we go back to the civil service being wrong, how they did, how they went about getting a lawyer and the amount of, and see the six hundred dollars, then, then you go get an interim attorney, which is Mr. Jones, without our consent, then where do that money come from?
Well, see, Mr. Green?
Okay, Mr. Mr., let me announce the speaker, uh, Mr. Jay Green?
So we just wanna know, that's my point exactly. This is their assessment of it. They said, you did the budget at the beginning of the year, you gave us X amount of dollars. So y'all already approved it, so I can pretty much do what I wanna do with it, because y'all already approved it, so ain't nothing y'all can say. That's what we trying to prevent this time. We don't wanna allot and allow free rein spending. So what we have to do, we have to draw that amount back to what we feel that's comfortable with the city operate. And when you go over that, we ain't saying that the money's not there. We just saying, to stop this from what's going on now, just going out high attorney, just say, hey, y'all can't do nothing about it. Board, because you already, you already approved it at the beginning of the year. That's ring, this is vital, that we look over the budget and do things at the beginning of the year. Because once you sign it, based on past practices, and based on what's been said and done the last three, three or four meetings, once we sign this, it's gonna be like, you already done put it there, so you can't tell me exactly what to do with it, because it's falling under the lawyer fund. So that's what, that's the only thing that I'm saying is, we wanna prevent that. I feel like it was over budget. That's ring you, that's ring that you able to go out and do the things that you do. Well, if we constrain the budget, you just stay within that physical realm, and if you go outside of that, then you have to come back before the board. That's not impeding on any administrative day-to-day operation. And I'm sure you well aware of that, mayor. I'm not implying that at all.
Okay, do we have all the questions out?
No, I, I have.
Go ahead, uh, Mr. Bradford?
What I was saying, uh, I, that's what I'm concerned about. Mayor, I guess you said, just spoke a minute ago, you had spoke with some of the department heads. I see most than two department heads sitting in the back, the chief. Chief, can y'all come up, cause you used to sit around the table, I hate to talk to them, can they, please?
Well, let, let them stay where they are, think they're comfortable, Mr. Bradford, go ahead, Mr. Bradford's your point.
Make a motion to get them up here, cause I'm not comfortable talking to you.
So we can, uh, we gonna address.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead this time, but think about that, mayor, in the future, okay? Then in the new year, come in. Uh, we, we, we're talking about a budget for, uh, our departments, and you said earlier that you has, you're speaking, you all in the process of preparing the budget. How soon can you get what you have, what you all have, and it may not be finalized, 'cause we wanna look at it too. How soon can you get it to the council and a copy to us, so we can look at it and maybe have a meeting a week from today, and, uh, if it's possible? And, and maybe we can have, you know, a better insight. I think we all want the same thing, and I think, I'm sure the employees want the same thing, and actually, we, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm telling you what are my concern, uh, the cost of living is going up, and I see some salaries go back to nineteen sixty. And you don't know, honey buns you could get two for a dollar, now they two dollars a piece. And don't mention, if you don't eat honey bun, what about eggs? These people need a raise, they need to have a raise, their family, they got concern, and I don't want, saying, I'm sitting up here, I got the chief and, uh, uh, the janitors not being happy with the job, because the job is not being performed, performed on some area. And I won't go into that, that's a whole different area. Uh, I have done some research on from park to regulation, always adjudicate the property. And we got some work to do, but first, we gotta get an adequate budget where everybody happy to go do the job. That, that's all, that's all we're asking, and I don't think nobody trying to say anybody doing anything wrong or shit. But it's only fair to, to be fair with all of us, and, and we wanna work. We ran to be a service of the community, we didn't run for a name, and, uh, and that's what, you, you have a good board if you, if you, if you work with everybody working together, uh, we, we can make passage, be something.
I have a suggestion.
Should be.
I would like to move this meeting maybe to a day next week, where we would have some data in order to discuss this, because we cannot discuss this without any numbers.
I agree.
Okay, any other statements?
I think, that was a motion, I think.
I make the motion.
I said.
Okay, um, let's be clear on this, you want to have no need.
We, we need as many as we can, to be honest.
We need some data.
Some data, we need some data, we just only got you.
This meeting without notes?
Right.
Let me say this.
Sure.
The staff is working diligently to get this information out. What happened today, Ms. Goldman?
We left last night, everything was fine. We got a call this morning at six o'clock, said that our server was down. We come up here and worked till eleven o'clock with no server again. We've had this problem for about four weeks, we were always shut down off and on. We've been working seven days a week, sixteen hours a day, trying to get caught up. We didn't know, I guess, the weather, we've had electricians, we've had Mr. Floyd, we've had somebody else to come in, and they got supports. Those are unexpected things, and nothing we can do about it, we just trying to find the problem. We got hit by lightning in City Hall, and apparently, that's what happened last night too. So right now, we're up, as soon as we started working, all of our staff was helping me. I'm waiting on some engineers on some projects that we've already got grants, they're trying to update some, some major, like the roof of the building, we've got a grant, but it don't pay at all, but they're trying to get numbers, 'cause the numbers that we budgeted for last year is not good. He's emailing, saying he's working on that to get it. That's a lot of money, and that's an important thing, so I'm trying to get all that together so we can finalize it.
Ms. Andrew.
Uh, wait just a minute, um, now, there's a bucket sitting in the hall as we speak. We've been waiting on this money here for since. We've been waiting on this money here for since I took office. Think it was three hundred eighty thousand dollars. Been talking to the engineer, it hadn't come in. And I don't have the luxury of calling the state and saying, look, I want this and I want it now. And I, I do not put unrealistic demands on the staff because they do break down. There's a lot riding on this. I'm still dealing with, with the audit from the previous administration and, and making good on all of the, the findings that I had to address. And we right in the middle of vacation time, we, where we have to take vacation, burning off comp time, which was exciting in the audit. So you pick your battles and who you wanna, who, who you gonna answer to? I don't wanna put the city in a position where money is held back because of delays. I had to write letter after letter to the auditors. So I have compassion and sensitivity to the existing staff that we have. Right this week, we had one staff member with a death. That's gonna have to leave out of town and go out of state. So the staff is doing the very best we can to provide information. Uh, don't wanna put premature information out there, and budgets are always based on the previous year forecasting. Now, if you wanna take a look at the previous year's budget and analyze that, you have a copy of it.
I was gonna ask you, Miss Sandra, if, uh, do you see any, any dramatic changes from last year's budget to this year's budget?
We will, because we've got a lot more grants. We're, we're already starting, we're not gonna finish it, so the engineers are waiting to see because we still got fifteen more days that they may send an invoice. And when you're dealing with federal money, once it hits your bank, you got three days to pay them. We're right at the end, so if they hit, and we gotta pay it before June thirtieth, it's gotta be in there.
Right, yeah.
And I don't know whether it'll hit or not, so that's gonna be a guess, and some of it's under your general fund. And that's what you're paying your employees from.
So do, do you think it's possible that, if we call a meeting for next week, then like the, you can highlight the areas that you still working on and therefore, when we talk next week, we can speak on.
We, we do have another payroll that's coming out of here too. And it's also gonna be some overtime because they're working on June tenth. There's also holiday that's gonna be there too. So I can, I can definitely do that, but I don't know what day, it needs to be at the end of it. And Mayor, may I make a suggestion? The public records request that you gave me was for June the fifteenth. And you changed it in the meeting, I just want everybody else to know that.
Oh, did, what, did it mean tonight?
The meeting tonight, your written letter was for the fifteenth of May.
Yeah, but we changed it in the, yeah, I will say.
You, you read it, that you, you did it for the fifteenth, that you turned it in, and what you handed me was the fifteenth.
Was the fifteen, so you're correct, so we changed.
Are you, are you, to make it.
One at a time, one at a time.
I have a suggestion, just to make sure, even, even what we can do too? We can all come get a budget from you? Cause only way we can speak about a budget together is us in a meeting. And anything outside of it would be violating the meaning law.
So you, you'll want, you wanna do it to the end of the week, is that what you're trying to do, is set up a meeting?
We can set up a meeting, therefore, we'll.
And, and have, have a, but, a budget, protect it.
Right.
Definitely not gonna be something you're thinking about, uh, because we can't, you, we've already published it, the meeting's gonna be on the thirty to pass it on the June the thirtieth.
Anyway.
Cause you, you gotta have it to stay within the law, you gotta, you gotta put it in the paper fifteen days in, and advertise it three weeks.
Anyway, possibly we can get extension, or, or, or how did that work? Because we started with the breakdowns and the confusion, I mean, the, the work staff, or, I mean, we could.
You can, you can pass a budget, of the budget being half of what this, when here and then, you can do that and just amend it. You know, when you do find, you can do another minute to amend that budget that you passed on June thirtieth. That is legal and that's an option.
Okay.
We want to stay within the provides of the budget as best we can. And let me just pose this as a question. Is your quest for what you're asking for, i- is it to, to somehow curtail something? Or is your request to help move the city forward?
I can answer that.
Yes, ma'am, Mister Tappin.
Our, um, suggestions are to help move the city forward. I know we've been talking about salaries and that is our main, um, concentration right now. We wanna stop the bleed. That's what we wanna do, we've talked to the chiefs, there's a problem, we trying to raise the salaries up and where we can recruit staff, maintain staff, we wanna stop the bleed.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and all for us to have, I'm sorry, for us to have all these suggestions and ideas of moving the city forward, we, we definitely need to take a deeper look into what we have to offer before making these type of promises.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor.
Um, go ahead, Mister Bradford.
Uh, Mi- Mister Gold, I, I wanna get some credit on what you said, I'm glad to hear that option that we have before us. Uh, you say, come June thirtieth, we have to sign some type of budget. It don't have to be, it can be amended, I mean, we can, don't have to be the exact budget, we can amend it sometime later, but that's what you're saying?
Mayor, can we have a, uh, can we have a public comment?
That's right, we didn't do public comments as it relates to.
We should have put that on, well, yeah, we do have it on there. We just didn't take time to do it, we jumped into the meeting. Okay.
We did, okay.
But that is an option.
Let's, on the public comments.
I'd rather attorney.
Uh.
I know they don't want the attorney, but I wanna make sure that I'm telling you right.
Okay, okay.
That the ball has not changed.
As I said, we don't want the attorney, just that he, at this time, he hadn't been approved by the board. I think he's a fine young man, myself personally, I talked to him on several different occasions, and I, he said, we don't want, that doesn't sound bad. Just says, we don't have attorney to advise us at this time.
Right.
Okay.
And I was.
I apologize for that word.
That's okay, yes, okay.
I'm, I'm gonna say this.
Mister Floyd, the, Mister Jay Green.
Yeah, to that point, I think Mister Jones is a fine man, and I think he gonna be a great city attorney. I look forward to working with him, but let's do it the right way and let's go ahead and do it right because we need some legal counsel as of right now. So let's, let, let, let's take the right protocol as to approving them. And everybody up here know, know what I'm talking about. Let, let's do the right thing because like right now, we need legal advice, but it's not done properly.
I think as long as the interim.
It's by, that, that's what I mean, so let's, as long as the word interim by his name, we, it, it, it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen. And I would love for you to represent the city of Bastrop, but just, just do it, let's just keep it in mind that we can't set a precedent of, of circumventing going around the council. So take the interim name off, we were looking forward to working with you, cause I think you're a brilliant mind. Then Mister, Mister.
We can't take the, we can't take the interim name.
Let me say this.
We can't take.
Excuse me, excuse me, one at a time, Mister Green, Mister Jay Green, not Mister, Mister D Green.
Yes, I was just enlightening him that we can't take it. Awaiting him for being an interim attorney because we wasn't, wasn't the ones that, that appointed him to be an interim attorney.
Okay.
See, to his name, I don't know how he is, but.
Yes, sir. Now, let, let's, let's, let's just try this.
Mister, Mister Jay Green.
Mayor.
Let's, let's just, let's, let's look at it this way. Just abolish the word interim. Let's just throw it out the window. I had an audit, I had to answer, I needed help, the city needed help. We had a million dollars riding in the, at stake in an audit. We have another half million dollars riding. I had to produce, and I had to produce, and I heard there were things that had been delayed on somebody's computer from twenty twenty-one before I took office. We had license that were expired. We had a lot of issues going on, and I worked night and day. So let's just throw the word interim out the window.
It's all right.
And I had to, I had to have some, some legal guidance because I took an oath of office to not let this city collapse. I was calling all over the state. Now, I say this, I don't want y'all to express yourself and be very candid, but I must say this to my own dissent, defense, because I am the head of the administration. I don't want my name in bad either. I, I don't want the city to lose a million dollars because of negligence on my behalf when I know better. I don't, I don't want the city to lose that half million, that forty thousand dollars that we fixing the parts with. And letter after letter that I had to write to get extensions because there were things that we had to correct. Now, that's where my passion is.
Mayor, when you get there.
Yes, ma'am.
All due respect, all due respect. We had Mister Pierre on the payroll, we were paying him. So if you were in dire need of advice, you had an attorney on the payroll. And that's our issue.
That's your issue.
No problem, no problem on Mister Jones, no.
Yeah, cause you, cause you, when you, when you get to saying, I, the attorneys work for the city of Bastrop, not just you, Mayor. So if you, if you have Pierre this on staff and paid, and you can utilize him for advice if you chose to. Now, granted, if we can't, we can't, apparently, we can't force you to go at, seek information from Pierre because you haven't. You chose to, which, we in a hiccup now because you chose to go get Devon, we all think Devon a great person. But here's the thing, we didn't approve Devon, and how the charter states that, the council have to approve it. So, so now this should be, if we send it up, would that be on the audit?
What would be on the audit, she didn't approve?
Uh, that we, that we, we also paying for attorney that we didn't approve.
Again, that's, that's legal, I, 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 I don't know, I can't speak on that.
Well, see, we always ask you those questions, so that's, that's why I kind of felt like it's okay to ask you at, at this moment. Cause in the other time, the mayor asked you about legal purposes, don't understand, you answered.
Um.
So, so, uh, that's neither here or there, but what I'm saying is.
I'm never answering questions concerning the attorney.
Which I, I, not the attorney, but you answer legal question when it pertaining to the audit, so I asked you a question.
Yes, but I can't answer that, cause that's not specifically related to.
You know, but, um, so this, that's how I think, that we have, that you have Pierre here, Mayor, and that you saying you in dire need, that you chose not to utilize Pierre, which, here's, here's, we have an interim attorney that we all would love him to be the city attorney, or I would love him to be the city attorney, but it's how it's going, we, we feel like it's not legal.
Okay, and, and you know what, uh, Mister D Green? As I said, let's throw the word interim out. Let's, let's forget about the word interim. But my passion was to keep the city going. And, 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 and not just for me, but for each one of you. How many of you on the panel, sitting here with me, had to write a letter, making an appeal to the state legislative authority? How many of you had to make an appeal to explain something that was purchased? I possess.
I mean, Mayor, we.
And I don't want to, I don't want to speak to a person's character in their absence. I, 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 I don't want to do that, I just said some reasons why I had to do what I had to do for the sake of the city of Bastrop. And I don't only look out for myself, I look out for each one of you as well.
Mayor, can I get a point of information on what you just said, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you said you had to seek outside counsel? Are you saying that, trying to phrase it right so it come out? So you saying that you seen the need to get outside counsel? Would you saying the counsel we had was not adequate?
I, I don't, I wanna speak to the character and competence.
I'm not gonna talk about character, I'm saying, you saying, uh, uh, you just, you, you just had to seek outside counsel because you was trying to meet deadlines, am I right?
I was, I was trying to satisfy what was before me without speaking to someone else's character and competence in a public meeting, and I'll leave that at that. Okay, any other points? And if, if you all think Mister Tappin made a motion, if y'all wanna meet every day until the budget is done, I mean, that's an unreasonable demand, but that's just a, we can give you a four, uh, uh, not, we can give you last year's budget and you can look at that, and you already have it, it was given to you in your packets sometime back. If you need a fresh copy of it, Mister Goldman, we can, um,
Yes, ma'am.
We can give you a fresh copy of that.
She delivered to him tomorrow.
We can have that to you tomorrow, and you can study that. But, uh, please, uh, take under consideration that a budget is bigger than just look taking one piece of the pie and doing what we want to do. A number was thrown out just because a question was phrased the last time, what would it take to, to be competitive? And see, that whole statement could be taken out of context. It could be taken out of context, it was phrased, what would it take to be competitive?
Right.
But then, when you look at it, uh, what would it take to be realistic in the budget to be able to make payroll? Because if we run the numbers, and we are looking, I, I want y'all to feel comfortable, we are looking for ways that we can, um, adjust that, but then we have variables, unknown variables, and you, you majored in accounting, I, I mean, I'm a business major. We understand that, Mister Green.
Yeah.
But there are other moving parts in this, and.
Yeah, that's why I can understand, Mayor, I, by me doing them, so because I don't, and you might hear me out, Miss Sandra, I don't see when people do a budget, you budget um, an extra three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars, uh, it's each a budget. So when the question asks, uh, why we not in the red when it pertaining to the police department, it's because the funds was there.
It was there, we, we budgeted when he, they, I talked to both chiefs on that.
Yeah.
And when they tell me, we've got so many vacancies, and tell me what rate they are, I'm out for that person, that base pay, plus supplemental pay and all that, for that person for the whole year. And even though we don't have them, I put it in the budget for that.
I, I get it, I definitely get it. So when, so when we was asking about a store number, many that, a number that we comfortable with helping our police department, because at this moment, we gonna have to, we gonna have to pay the sheriff department regardless. So if we can limit, and I thought especially from my seat, was coming up with an amount to eliminate paying the sheriff department. That way, we won't, we won't be nearly as much coming out of our German funds by hiring four or five more police officers than what we paying sheriff department for a whole year. If you do the calculations, because I just, and I did the calculation, you, just right in the city council meeting, and I did it nineteen, nineteen dollars a, a hour. And if you factor in that, we, we talking about four or five police officers, I can't remember, you don't want them to come up there and ask. But we paying right now, what we, three hundred thousand and counting for the sheriff department, and that was for a whole year.
Okay, um, Mister Green, hold, hold on your phone. Okay, what was budgeted?
I agree.
In that, when we were operating at fifty percent of the capacity, but we budgeted that amount of money. Now, if we were operating at fifty percent of the pa- of capacity, and then we started, and the reality is, we fell below that. We fell below that fifty percent capacity, which placed the city in jeopardy. So we could not allow criminal activity to run rampant. Okay, well, the money is over here because it was budgeted, but then finding the people, finding the people to fill those positions, and I think you heard from both the chief and the assistant chief on the issues surrounding that. We, if we, if we, if we could fill every slot, we would. But what has happened here, hold your thought, Mister Goldman, what has happened here? We had people have retired, proof of that they have come in, go ahead, Mister Goldman.
Mayor, I, I've said this publicly in the meetings here lately. It's not that they don't deserve it, they do, and we're talking about expenses, but we don't have the revenue to pay the nineteen dollars starting pay. Most of our revenue, you cannot use any of the money for grants. It's not used for salaries. Most of your revenue comes from sales tax and property tax.
Which, okay.
The other piece of the round pie that Miss Cindy does every year, and she does that five year back, every year she shows, when you look at that graph, every year, it's very, changes very little in your revenue. So the revenue is basically gonna be the same.
I, I get that, Miss Sandra, so.
We're not, we're talking about increasing our expenses, and y'all talking about cutting, but the line item of each department, you can't cut enough of those line items enough to be able to pay the fire and police what you wanna. You can't cut enough of those line items enough to be able to pay the fire and police what you wanna them pay.
We, we, we not, we not talking about cutting, here's what we talking about, because you just told me y'all budget for vacant police, it's like, listen, follow me. So, i- if you give me a amount, just say, we roughly gonna say close to four hundred thousand dollars, how much we done paid sheriff department, right? So if you, if you do that, as I did it at seventeen dollars hour, forty hours a week times four times twelve, that's like thirty-three thousand dollars a year. So you, you divide four hundred thousand dollars by thirty-three thousand, and you tell me how many police officers you can get at seventeen dollars per hour.
Okay, Ms. Green.
See, this is, see, see, cause I'm, what I'm saying is that we not, it's there for a way we gonna cut the budget, because we already pretty much over budgeted. Not over budgeted, because we just budgeted for vacant spots that the police department have there. Hence, while we can pay the sheriff department X amount of dollars, what we saying is, hey, let's eliminate paying the sheriff department this X amount of dollars and take care of our police department. Not cutting the budget, because the money is already there. Follow me, uh, follow me, Miss Andrew, cause I do numbers, I know you do numbers. So what I'm saying is, we paying them four hundred thousand dollars, not including what we paying our police that we have in staff. So if you, if you factor in the four hundred thousand dollars that we paying sheriff department so far, and we paying what we, our police do have on payroll. Only thing I'm asking you is, if you have, if you paying them four hundred thousand dollars, and you divide it by thirty-three thousand, that's seventeen dollars an hour. A, a year, that's seventeen times forty times four times twelve. If you divide that by, four, four hundred thousand dollars by that, you can see, see how many police officers we got, and we can afford it because we gotta pay it regardless. Which was Mr. James saying, it's temporary to permanent, long as we gonna pay the sheriff department regardless, until we enhance our police department. So when we came up with a number was, to get them a number that's competitive for them to go get, what it was, four or five police officers? That, four, so you do four police officers, and then we can take over our police department, that's all we was saying, it's not the cut, no, it's, the money is already there, what we cutting it for?
Oh, I think, okay, and appreciation of what you just said, Mr. D Green. We have to look at the, the, excuse me, um, the inverse relationship, one thing goes up, something else goes down. Okay, the money is there because it was budgeted for a maximum number, we did not reach that threshold.
I'm fine.
People were not, and, 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 and I've taught our indication, we have to be in compliance with civil service, so they have to meet that standard. Okay, if we had all those slots filled at the current, but that's, that's what would make budget. The money was there because it was allocated, it was budgeted, but we did not meet the.
The, the number of police in this slot.
And there's thirty-one slots, right?
That's a lot.
I get it, that's what, I, I get, this is what I'm saying, I get, I get how you budget, I get that you budget for the vacancies. Here's why the money is there, which I was saying last council meeting, because we budgeted thirty-one, thirty-one police officers, they say. We positioned depending on a police rate, correct? So now we down to seven to eight police officers, of course the money gonna be there, because I know for sure, anybody know, Devon know. That if you have a business, you not finna budget five hundred to four hundred five thousand dollars over. Right, so the money is there regardless, it's not the cut, it's not the cut money, because we gonna have to pay the sheriff department, fo- let's just say four hundred fifty thousand a year. What I'm saying is, we can go pay, we can, we need four police, four, four more police officers. We can, we can have an increase to seventeen dollars hour, cause we paying some of the sheriff department, four to two dollars hour.
And what is the civil service standard, I just have a question. I know somebody mentioned the civil service standard, what, what is the standard?
This, this charter says that we have to be in compliance with the civil service and then hiring police and fire.
Okay, but, and that's the thing, if we, if we allot.
He's not speaking to the, the way, or he's speaking to, uh, being in compliance with the civil service protection for police and fire. Go ahead, Ms. Tappin.
If we allot it for thirty-one slots, and we have seven, eight officers now, my suggestion, let's try to get twelve to, let's budget for twelve to fifteen full-time officers. That a lot for somebody taking vacation.
Don't change the budget, Miss Andrew, you change the budget when you run into problems, cause you never know what the future might.
No, but we wanna do the budget at the increased wage.
But this, this is what I'm saying, you don't have to, you don't have to budget for, you can still budget for the same thirty-one, the thirty-one slots. Cause the money there, if you get the budget for twelve, then that's gonna decrease your money.
And also, I, I gotta, I'm. Bradford, did, um.
I have the last year budget, I went through third. We have a lot of waste in our budget, we need to restructure our budget. Uh, for instance, they, they speak about the sheriff, you just for instance, and everybody seem to be on the same page about that. Uh, again, we, we, we have, we just have to restructure, there's a lot of waste in, 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 in departments, uh. Uh, I mean, we gotta look at the budget and say, what are we spending in, 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 in gas, for even, uh, for car, you know, we gotta check all that. Are, are we getting the most of our money, are we getting enough service for our money? We got a lot of money in the budget for Bastrop being the beautiful city of North Dakota, which it's not. Okay, w- we have a budget, and we have to restructure it, but that's why we need to meet with the council and the, and whoever putting the budget together. And everybody go on the same page, see what we can cut, what we can't cut. But, again, we have enough in the budget, yeah, I hear this word, we don't have enough, we didn't have enough. Don't tell me, we don't have enough in the budget to put the lights out front in those round ball, I ride through at night, all of myself, three, I think now. See, see, we gotta make sure our, each department is doing their part, and, 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 and go in where we can. We can't cut salaries for people, cause they already under salary, but we can adjust the thing like. We paying something that's not, not benefits to us, I mean, I'm not gonna call any names either, we got people in the budget. Have showed me anything for the month. I'm not gonna call it now, we'll get the name called it, but we got to sit down as a council and the, and the people who preparing the budget. And structure the budget, cause we have the money, it's just a matter of restructure the budget where it can be beneficial to, you know. Get what we looking for with what we have, work with what we have. And I, I, I wanna say one other thing, I know I'll get a chance to speak on the lawyers, the attorney fee. Mary, you said you had, you, you was under a lot of pressure, I'm sure, I, I don't think I'm gonna run for mayor. But you was under a lot of pressure, and, and, and so you had to make some decision, but, uh. Remember, in the future, after Ju- Ju- I mean, July of this year, if you run into that situation again, please, please approach the council. With any changes that we have, anything that we made, and our day-to-day operation, but anything concerning this council, I think you need to at least call us in. Well, I don't, I didn't hear you say I called the council in and asked for attorney, they wouldn't give me one.
Well.
I mean, I, yeah, let me finish, please.
Okay.
Okay, but, what I'm saying is, the proper approach is gonna get us where we need to be. If we take the proper approach, cause we have the money, we have the money, but we got to structure and look at it from all in. From gasoline and the vehicles, from, uh, uniforms, or, you know, what we doing, we gotta see what we can cut a little bit, so we have more capital to work with. You know, uh, and another thing too, we ought to buy franchise fees, uh, we still collecting franchise fees for some of these franchises, uh, that we have. They get, for instance, we getting fifty thousand dollars from them, and we paying them three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, I mean, more, you know, I guess with some figures, I understand that, but, other word, I think any franchise, for instance, I, I mean, you use energy. Energy should be able to work better from what I seen the franchise, what we receiving from them is, is crumbs. And then I look at the expenses, we paying hostage energy, wow, they, they whipping us in the head. We not, uh, maybe we need to increase our, our percentage for, uh, for, uh, franchise fee. You know, we, everything that's going on, why we still sitting in the nineteen forties? We, we, we not to make some changes, we not to restructure some thing, all for this to work out, life is changing, you know, life is changing, and. I think we have the pride because we're not moving with the times and, and, and instruction our, uh, our cities. And we gotta ask people, like, uh, I'm gonna use energy, energy, because they, you know, they, we spent a lot of money with energy. I see a lot, that's why we're contracts we're getting to, uh, uh, for instance, I use Ditto again, a week and a dollar a year, a month or whatever it is. And paying, uh, two hundred dollars to keep it up. And we, we, I mean, that's not beneficial, we, that's, that's, we could cut back if we, if we take a building and make something that we can use, you know, that we can use, but. We, restructure is what we, I think we need to sit down, but we, all of the restructure, we all have to sit down at the table. And make sure everyone, you know, spell it out, don't be afraid to spell that out, I, I mean, we got some, I, I'm so proud of sitting with this council here today, and I've been trying to get on for thirty years.
That's true. With that being said, Mr. Bradford.
Yes.
Do I need to talk to you as my council representative, or do I need to speak from my seat as a mayor? Just tell me which position you want me to hold.
You the mayor, have a, I'm still your representative. I can show the film, man.
Give you that one.
Okay.
But, um, I did meet with, um, council members when we were facing with some issues, I met with them in twos initially. Then I was guided to meet with them individually, and so I did do that, disclosure. Okay, I think Mr. Um, D Green had something he wanted to say.
You go ahead, cause you. Miss Andrew, when last time we had thirty-one police officers, about fifteen years ago?
Man, I, I don't know, I, I don't wanna say, it's been a while.
I see somebody in the police department nodding, like, yeah, so, you've been budgeting for thirty-one officers. And we ain't had thirty-one officers in, in, in fifteen, in fifteen years, and if you got four shifts. We talking about starting salary, so you looking at, if you got four shifts, you got a captain on each shift, that's, that's four. You got a sergeant, that's four. Then you got the chief, then you got the assistant chief, which that's, 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 uh, that's on up to about ten, you just keep going up and up. We not talking about paying everybody, we talking about the starting salaries.
So, so let me ask, you're, you're, you're walking. Mr. Green, you're a patrolman walking, and you wanna, you wanna increase theirs and nobody else?
No, that's what, no, I, I can, that's where the feasibility studies come in, we wanna stop the bleed at first, and then when the feasibility study come back, we will adjust others.
Uh, Miss Andrew, uh, every.
Come on up.
Uh, uh, wait, wait, just. Miss Andrew, before, before Chief come up.
Okay, Chief Reed.
Yes, sir. You gotta be realistic.
Yeah, I got you.
If you give the starting, if you increase that starting pay, and you don't increase the rest of the officers' pay, you gonna lose.
But that's where the feasibility study come in, right now, we just trying to recruit you, we trying to help you get some people on the door.
But, not gonna help me if you increase the starting pay.
So how you gonna ever get officers?
You're not gonna help the police department if you increase the starting pay and don't increase.
But we will, that's our plan, we need, that's why the feasibility study is important, as soon as we get that back, we will adjust to others, everybody will adjust.
Hey, I'm, I'm. So you're not talking about doing, uh, giving them, giving the start, increasing the starting pay, and then later on coming back and increasing the others?
We would like to do it at one time, but if we don't, we need to help you get some patrol money. Until the officers may be, within the three month span, we could do it for everybody.
Chi, Chi Reed, how many more police officers?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Mr. Uh, D Green has the floor.
Miss Andrew, the money we use to utilize to pay the police department is from the revenue we get in, correct?
That's right.
Okay, Chief, how many more police officers would it take for us to get our department back open, like all of us would want?
We need, we need a minimum of four officers right now for us to go back to full.
Okay, so, how many would that make?
That would give us twelve.
I want everybody to listen, we already budgeted thirty-one police officers.
That would give us twelve patrol.
It's, okay, Chief, I got you, I'm, I'm coming with you, Chief, hold on one second. That would give us twelve police officers, there's no need to cut the budget, you need to as is, because that revenue is, was been coming in yearly, correct, Miss Andrew?
That's true.
So, so we have twelve police officers, that's all we need, we budgeted thirty-one. We will be able to give the starting pay and give some, you don't need no feasibility study for that, you just need your calculations. And you can just help me out, if you tell me, I can do the calculation for it hourly, but what else be, what else factor in, I can do it for us, and we not gotta pay nobody.
But the theory, why I wanna feasibility study is because you gotta pay people for years of service.
That's what, Miss, Miss Andrew, anything, at this point, we, we gotta take care of the ones been there, but anything is better than nothing.
But we wanna be fair.
We can do, and it's only, could be fair, we gotta take care of both of them, but I'm saying is, we don't need no one, no one to come in, pay, I would do it for us, if Miss Andrew give me the numbers.
Well, if you could do it, and the mayor said she had possibly somebody to do it.
Well, we can, we, we can match numbers together.
Uh, okay, and I do have someone that, that is committed to come in and, and speak with us on not just that, but other things. Crime rate and other statistical stuff that's, that's happening with the, Ms. Goldman can run the numbers. She can run the numbers, and, and she can also let you know whether, uh, whether, where, where we exhaust money at.
Right.
Can we go together, Miss Andrew? Uh, would you like her to get?
I would do it, let y'all look, that way I wouldn't be doing one with council, not the other.
My thing is, if you've been.
But let me explain this, you go to the whole picture, okay, right now, you're talking about police officers. And yeah, the money's coming in there, but the money we're getting there is for the whole city. Now, I realize you gonna take the chunk and say, here, give it this, but you're also saying this. You're gonna, you're, Ms. Moore's saying, the walking new officer is gonna be seventeen dollars, I want you seventeen, cause that's what was publicly.
Right.
Said.
Right.
You're gonna give them seventeen, which is four dollars and thirty-eight cents an hour raise.
Right.
Okay, you're gonna hire them in there, now, remember what Assistant Chief told y'all about the process of hiring a civil service? How long it's gonna take?
Right.
Okay, so do you plan to say, okay, June thirty, we're cutting our contract off? Okay, you're gonna already, already gonna say, okay, I'm gonna cut this contract, we're not paying the sheriff department no more.
We can't do that.
I'm, I'm just saying, so you do that, but on July one, you're gonna start only the starting new officer. But that officer first has to take the civil service test, then they have to get the results, and then they start with the physicals and sites and all that. And then you gotta wait to August before that person can go to the academy.
I don't, I mean, it's going, I like, I don't think it was the will of this whole council, that was Bishop, was gonna cut the contract.
Okay, we, we, we don't wanna cut the contract. I'm trying to do this, where did, where did we not pay him, but yet we give the raises at, at the same time? And, 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 are you talking about giving it July one, that starting pay that, and not the others? Because let me remind y'all, we are spending, this year, we had to do a special line item the first year. Because of a fireman lawsuit filed in two thousand eight. And that's eighty-six thousand a year that we're committed to pay, we don't have a choice if we don't pay it, they coming after y'all. So I'm just saying, but yet now, y'all are looking to say, we're gonna give the starting pay a farm, a police officer X amount. But we're not gonna go it up the ladder, that's why we got the lawsuit for the fireman.
That's not, that's not what we saying, this, this is what I'm saying, Miss Andrew, I, my goal is for us to eliminate at some point the sheriff department. If we eliminate the sheriff department, we have, we have the money to give our, the, the starting pay with the raises. Because we already budgeted for it, so regardless, we go, when you say, when you saying it's a pot, it's certain amount come out this pot. It's coming out this pot regardless, it's been coming out this pot for years, parallel since we been at the thirty-one police officer staff. So every year, we've been budgeting at thirty-one police officers.
But we've been budgeting, and we don't have extra revenue, we've been budgeting thirteen, twelve for a starting fire police officer.
I, I get, I get.
Okay, but the revenue did increase, but yet our expenses for place warming is gonna increase. Not only that, that four dollars and thirty-eight cents, retirement, FICA.
That's what I'm saying.
All that's going in there too, and our work and stock, cause it's based on your dollar amount. So when you raise up your salary, your insurance or work and stock's going off.
And that's not illegal.
It's part of the picture, but we're talking about, and we all agree, everybody needs it, I, I'm the first one to say, I. I, I'm the first one to say, I don't wanna carry a gun. I want our police officers, they are dedicated. We're talking about that, but then where are we getting the extra revenue? If you're gonna, if you're gonna move and allocate, there's not enough of them single line items in everybody's budget to cut enough to pay those salaries and benefits there.
So if we keep, if we keep shutting down at six o'clock, we gonna, you gonna continue to pay the sheriff department if it's indefinite? And it's gonna be, what, what, what you saying is?
I mean, we're right near over, close to four hundred dollars.
So if we don't rectify this problem, you gonna continue to pay that? I, I, I mean, and just like he said, we ain't been at thirty-one, we ain't been at thirty-one officers in a long time.
Chief Reed.
Right, we have been at thirty-one officers. He said we need.
Assistant chief pays.
Four officers to be, to, to get back on the patrol, right? Just four. So that, so that puts you at about twelve. So if you need, if you just need twelve officers, or maybe just say sixteen, you still gonna come in way under this three hundred, four hundred some thousand a year. And I understand what you saying. You saying that's gonna take a while. It's gonna, we know that. It's gonna be, if you start today, it's gonna be like next year before you can get an officer on the streets. We well aware of it. We saying you gotta start somewhere. But also you saying, starting June, I mean, January first, I mean, July, I mean, when, July first, you saying July first. What you saying is, if we pay, give the police officers a raise, plus pay the sheriff department, that's what you, that's what you saying?
Well, I think we are gonna have to do that if we don't have the officers hired and put them in the car and let them work. Where you, who's gonna help them?
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm, I'm well aware of what you saying. That's what I'm saying. We know that we gonna be paying the sheriff department for a while now, because if we start today, we still gonna be paying them for at least about a year, year and a half, because it's not just gonna resolve itself overnight. You gotta hire them, train them, and then evaluate them, and then, then put them in the car. So it's gonna be about a year and a half. We understand that. So we know that we gonna be spending this amount of money. What I'm saying is, if you didn't, you, you, you budgeted for thirty-one people, and now you paying the sheriff, you, 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 you're not going over budget because you budgeted for thirty-one people, and we don't have a eight. They helping up, they, they, they working, so we paying them. So what we saying is, you're not gonna be paying, what, sixteen? I just say you twelve, sixteen, right now, because it's gonna be hard getting officers. You're not gonna get thirty-one officers. So you gonna keep budgeting thirty-one officers. We not gonna have that. What's gonna happen is, we gonna keep going down this road, we gonna keep spending all this money, and by four years from now, it's gonna be depleted. We ain't gonna have no police department, because we gonna spend all the revenue. So we gotta solve the problem. Either you do it today, or you have no police officer, and, uh, no police force in the future, because you cannot pay sixty thousand dollars a month to the sheriff department indefinitely, and think you gonna add it with? You just said, we revenue strapped.
Well, the, the amount of money that you're talking about paid last time was not all about the patrol. We had three months of inmates in that total this month.
What about the month before that?
I don't know about that, but I do know this month, that when you looked and you said fifty-eight thousand, that was not all patrol there. That was inmates that they housing, we paid for three months, um, in that check that you approved.
Right, it was pretty.
So I just wanted to clarify that too.
Okay, now, we're, we're talking about the same amount of money, moving it around, and trying to, to create something. At the end of the fiscal year, it's about revenue, expenses and revenue. I'm not hearing anywhere where the revenue's being increased to do what it is that we all agree, I believe, that we want everybody, not only police and fire, all other employees. And just today alone, we were so strapped. We were so str, I had a call about cemetery, in the midst of everything else, I had a call about the streets. I had a call about parks, because Juneteenth is coming up. I had about six calls today where dispatch folks. And I talked with Public Works, and we got them spread out over here. We got some on vacation. So let's be exercised to quorum with each other and not question as if we're indicting that there's something that's being hidden here. Chief Reed, what, what happened the other day? We, we had, uh, the work, the job fair. And we had folks there, so they're constantly looking for somebody to hire, to take the civil service test, to go through all those steps that you have already discussed. Go ahead, Chief Reed.
Oh, we had six applicants, uh, at the job fair, so, uh, two of those applicants were patr, were patrol and the other were dispatch.
Okay.
Working on that as a speaking.
So now, Chief Reed, if you will direct the assistant chief to speak to how that, because he manages the patrol for you, that's correct?
Right, he receives his instructions from me.
Okay. Now, what do you see, Chief, uh, if you give the assistant chief the directive to address, how do you see the gradual increase?
The gradual increase of officers?
Yes, sir.
Um, I can tell you, we had six applicants, the two were patrol. One stated, have you ever been convicted of a felony? Yes. Or for Xanax and possession of power. The other applicant, have you ever been convicted of a felony? Yes. I was a drug addict and I stole a lot. That is the quality of applicant we get currently. Okay, and we can't hire them. They may have straightened their lines out. They may be at a point in their life where they're ready to move on, but the law forbids us to hire them, because you cannot be a police officer in the state of Louisiana with a felony on your record. Uh, if you can be arrested for misdemeanor, we'll take that. We've had good officers that messed up when they were younger and done something silly. We're sliding for thirty-one people. We can get away with twenty. Okay, four dispatchers. The chief, the assistant chief, a detective, two detectives, and three people per shift. All right, and that should equal up to twenty. We can get by with that. That is the minimum we need to operate. Anything else after that? We would consider to be, you know, paradise. We have not had that many, excuse me, we have not had that many officers in a very long time. Uh, four to a shift, uh, is, is a, when I first started twenty-eight years ago, there were five people per shift. There were five detectives. We had a five-man camp team. Now, we had a jail, a jailer, we had two, uh, dispatchers on every shift, all right? Didn't know how good we had. And now, if we had four on a shift, we, we would think that we were, you know, we, we, we had a good gravy on our biscuit, okay? But the fact of the matter is, is that safety wise and the ability to do the job, it's more required a minimum of three people per shift we can operate. We've been operating that way for years, okay? We've been, when, before we got into the situation we were in. We were doing our job, you know? Uh, and it's apparent that we don't have the people. Crowds up, people are scared, you know? It will be gradual. But I know the chief has crunched numbers. And if you can use once in those eleven spots, that we don't need to be filled and find another way to add on top of that, I think we're on the right track. But, you know, no matter what, pay is gonna be a part of the hiring process. Not the only part, but it's gonna be a part. I can tell you that we've had a couple of people from other departments that are watching what y'all are doing, that wanna come back home, but they don't wanna do it at thirteen dollars. So they're watching y'all, and that would be two that we would probably be able to hire within a couple of months.
Can I have a question?
It's my, do you have one? Yeah, what do you take that long? It'd be overnight, because they're already post-certified. You know, I'm never gonna be one to beat around the bush. That's not who I am. That's why I will never be in that man's spot.
I love it.
Okay, I, if this was the military, this man is the general, and I'm the sergeant major, all right? My job is the day-to-day operations. I keep, kick the privates in the butt and I make them be the closest to you. But I take my orders from this man, all right? This man is a very capable leader, all right? If it wasn't for this man, then there'd be no bench for police department. Because this man was holding that whole thing down by himself. While we were all working the hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty hours, this man was not only doing the chief's job, the assistant's chief's job, he was the only detective. So he's trying to run a whole department and solve murders, and solve them, okay? This man is smart. This is a good, qualified man. Now, I helped train him, so I know he is, okay? But the fact of the matter is, I don't want his job, all right? He is the man for this job, because he has skills I don't have. He can polit it. I can't do that, okay? But the simple fact of the matter is, it is gonna be a lengthy, unless we can get these post-certified officers in. There's no guarantee on that. You could up the pay, we could have ten guys come from other agencies and say, hey, I wanna have that. And we could hire them overnight, and overnight, we could be done with the sheriff department, but there's no guarantee of that. You understand what I'm saying? So we could, it, it's really up in the air, you know? Regardless, I think we would be able to recruit people. If we have to recruit them and send them to the academy, it is gonna take a while. And it usually takes a month to a month and a half to run through the hiring process. And that's if they already have a civil service school. Under civil service, they have to take a test, they have to pass it. Once they take the pa, uh, test, we are required to do an oral review board. We put them through the oral review board, if they pass the oral review board, then we start setting them up with all the other tests. They have to take a physical with a doctor, we have to take a psychological test, they have to take the lie detector test, they have to do the drug screening. Once all that's done, and that can usually take more than a month and a half, two months, two months to get it all done, then we have to wait on the academy to start. Now, by law, we can't put them in a car for a year without being post-certified. All right, but now you're talking an extreme liability for the city of Bastard, because you have someone not trained to be a police officer out there with a gun, dealing with people's civil liberties, all right? So you can hire them just to get them on payroll, try to find them something to do at the office, but, uh, you don't wanna put them out there on the streets, untrained until they go to the academy, because once they go to the academy and become post-certified, then what they call good faith kicks in, and the city of Bastard, uh, civil liability, if they make a mistake, goes down. Because it falls on the officer, and the officer's training there. Now, the fact that the city hired somebody unqualified to put them out there.
Okay, Assistant Chief, now, Chief Reed, do you wanna add something to that?
Uh, basically everything he said, you know, he covered everything. Who sets the standards, the minimum standards for officers that you can operate with is the Department of Justice. And, uh, we cannot operate with less than three patrolmen. We can't do it. We'll be in violation with the Department of Justice, and they will come in and they will shut it down. No questions asked. They'll shut it down.
I have a, I have a question for you.
Richard, I think I heard Mr. Dee Green, uh, called my attention.
Uh, either chief, chief or assistant chief, either one of you guys can answer the question. Um, so we need three patrolmen to the shift, correct?
Correct.
Would you think, if we can, for each shift, we can utilize our guys and then utilize the police, um, the sheriff department for the additional, just say we use two of our guys each shift and use one of theirs? I think if we was to do it in numbers like that, we're actually cut down on paying them as well. Is that, is that, I mean, is that a possibility?
You know, we, like I said once before, we looked at that, me, the sheriff, and the mayor, and the sheriff saw where it was gonna cause problems over on his end. And that's the last thing we wanna do, is cause problems where it messes up his operational. You're talking about taking four people and assigning them to nights. Then if you try to rotate it with his other officers, it, his shifts can't be stable. His shift, his shifts need to stay stable in order for them to help us, because you gotta factor in, people get sick, people take vacations. You have to factor in the way his shift works as well. They also have the, uh, they have a different R and M system than us, record management system. They can't enter their stuff into our system. So, um, the, uh, they, and we can't enter our stuff into their system. So when they work at night, all the complaints are going into their system. When our officers work at night, the sheriff department's dispatchers are recording the complaints. And at the end of their shift, our officer brings, our officers bring the reports to the dispatchers, and they reenter them into our system, because our, our systems aren't interchangeable.
Kind of, so Chief, from the looks, looks of it, we paying them time and a half, right? On top of what their normal salaries?
The, the rates vary with, uh.
Different police officers?
Different officers. It's on their rate.
Why, if they work in our shift, why do we have to pay them overtime? Is it like a something that you guys came up with an agreement?
Now, on that end right there, you, that's, that's beyond me right there.
Because then, if they work.
But I do know.
I'm sorry.
The ones that are working are off-duty officers that are working. So therefore, I get, I guess that, uh, agreement was that they would be paid overtime, because they've already put in their hours. Their work, the officers you see working at the sheriff department are working overtime. They, they are working overtime. They, they're working on their off days.
So in, in light of him helping us, did he come finding more officers to, we can just pay their regular salary? Then that would have cut off the cost.
Well, they have to work over there, because they're full-time over there, and their benefits. So when they work their shift to work over there, they're either off, or they're taking vacation over there and working here. So when they're doing that, they're making straight time there. But then when they work, they could be on vacation days, but they could come over here to work graveyard on vacation. So the rate that y'all are seeing that is a time and a half, and y'all are comparing time after our straight time.
Right, so I, it makes sense. I, I get it, though.
You, you, somebody throws forty-one dollars, that's a, that's kinda like a lieutenant or whatever it is. It's only one person that during that pay period that's getting that, in case they have somebody else that's on vacation or sick, and then they gotta reach whoever will, and they're getting tired, I'm sure, too, so.
Okay, that's, that's your role, Mr. Jay.
I get it, thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll send a thank you.
Thank, both of you. Uh, Mr. Jay, Mr. Jay Green. We wanted to, uh, to say something. Let us also be cognizant of the fact that the sheriff and his staff, you know, we, we can't have a unilateral MOU where we get everything we want and we just overlook it. Failure will stand, stand in that. There are those constraints and those barriers that I was talking about. Okay, if you hold on, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Jay Green said he wanted to say something.
Okay, I, I just wanted to say, we looking at thirty-one and twenty, he just, this chief and assistant chief just about told us what it's gonna take. If you don't, he said, if you don't up the pay, you gonna be in the same predicament, because they, only way you gonna get recruits is raise the pay, based on what I just heard. He said, you gotta kinda raise the pay, though, because nobody's gonna come. The two applicants, you right, they had two applicants, but you get the butt with your paper. He said, now one of them passed the test. I mean, they, they didn't even, they didn't even, you can't even consider those, those two candidate. So I look at, we had thirty-one officers in a long time. You paying the sheriff department, uh, astronomical figures. Look like if you could just get it to sixteen or whatever, or twenty, you probably could consider giving them a raise, the whole department, because if you don't up their pay some way, it, it, you never gonna get the officers. He just.
It it, you never gonna get the officers, he just about been told, you know, said fifteen times in fifteen different ways. Money is gonna solve the problem, if you don't solve the money issue, you're not gonna solve the problem. You gonna keep paying the Sheriff Department overtime, and I got a point of information to say. Is that when we paying those guys over there, is that insurance and all that?
No, it's not insurance, it's just they're, uh they're not, we're not paying for the gas or anything like that. They're using their vehicles, we're paying for the labor for those men.
Okay.
And I'm sure on the overtime, we're paying the FICA and the.
That's what you do, that's what.
Medicare on that, but not the insurance.
Okay.
Because they weren't gonna pay the insurance no matter where they work, they are here, you know?
But what, so we paying the FICA and the other thing?
Yeah, we're paying the FICA and the Medicare.
Same thing, we be paying ours.
Absolutely.
But we'll be paying them at a cheaper rate, ours.
Well, it is on your salary, because I don't know, I don't know their rate salaries versus y'all's straight time yet.
Well, if they on the bottom over there, they still on overtime, they making more than our people on the bottom, that's what I'm getting at. No matter, if you can pay them three hundred some thousand dollars a year, but we'll see what the figures are at the end of the year. We'll see what we paid them versus what we should be able to pay our police officers. Look like you could give them some type of raise based on what we already done for the Sheriff Department. Because you go back on and look and you trace the money, this this been going on for about a year and a half. So it's, it, you can see that we've been doing this, we did it last year, and now we've did it all this year. So the money is being, the money is there, because we, we paying the Sheriff Department and we still not in the red. So what we can do is, you're not gonna pay thirty-one officers a raise, because they not gonna have that many. Most, most, they probably gonna have about fifteen to twenty, what he said, what he said, twenty? If you can come up with a figure, with twenty, let's, let's look at the number twenty and try to see what we can. Come up with with a raise for twenty police officers, instead of paying the Sheriff Department all this money every month. And we're never gonna solve the problem, because he just told you, if you don't up the pay, you're not gonna get the officers. So if you go, keep going down this road, and in about four, five years, you ain't gonna have no Police Department, because we gonna be bankrupt.
Mr. Goldman, hold on, Mr. Bradford, Mr. Goldman, we are, we are already investigating. What is logical, what is practical to do. We we're running the numbers, I've talked to both police and fire. And let's not forget, we got other employees as well that feel that they are doing something equally. But with that being said, Mr. Goldman already knows, go ahead, Mr. Bradford.
I've, I know for a fact, I don't even say nothing, as I know. The Sheriff's Department should be, you know, dying from the city of Bastard. The Sheriff's Department have an investigating department that cover the parish. The Sheriff's Department have a patrol department that control the parish. Do you realize we're a part of this parish? If we have just a dispatcher on duty, and the city get a call and call for help, they are obligated under the law. I'm trying to check that when we hire, okay? Uh, they are obligated under the law to come and assist in their patrol. Why are we paying the Sheriff's Department anything? We just gotta pu- put their, our chief should take what we have and and schedule them according to, you know. Somebody there, a dispatcher, gotta be there. Okay, you got whatever officer, you got two, three, whatever, if there's a call go out for assistance, let's say for instance. If a call go out on a, on a homicide, oh shoot, that's what we having a lot of, oh shoot. Don't you know the Sheriff's Department is obligated to assist us? Why are we paying them? I keep asking myself, why we keep bumping our heads? They are obligated to pay, they are getting paid on, I I'm a taxpayer. They are, protect me. You're taxpayer, I'll protect you, we getting, we getting scammed. Now, I tell my, well, the Sheriff's Department out there would hit me. I pay parataxia, let they tell Sheriff's Department protection. Now, why the city ambassador is paying them too? It was a scam from the beginning, and we need to stop it. Because it's a lot of money, we can never be able to increase the fire department or nobody else's array at that rate. We are paying unnecessary. Chief, I'm back, can I ask the chief, of course, you will let the chief answer your question?
Wait, wait. Uh, let, let's, let's try to exercise courtesy when we speak of the Sheriff's Department.
I thought I was courtesy the world for a minute.
We, we don't want to have a bad relationship with them or.
I got a real bad relationship with them, even though they don't. A real bad relationship, I I'm not gonna bite my tongue about it.
Okay.
Okay, uh they need to be, they need, they have, they've been, they've been got over four hundred thousand dollars, whatever Mr. Green said. And they haven't gave this city no report. They haven't did before, this council at no time have gave no report of what they've done. That's, 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 that's ridiculous, to pay money to people, can't you give you a reporter where your money go?
So.
But I had a question for the chief, chief.
Oh, which?
Uh, the mayor say so. But I would.
Bradford, so, so are you, are you?
Uh, please. Go ahead, you cutting me off, man, I had.
No, you cut me off, I can't, I had the floor. Are you saying, uh?
You cut me off, I'm gonna give it to you.
Are you saying that just cut it off and just let them have an unman ship out there?
I'm saying, let me see, let me see what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
I'm saying, with a, with a dispatcher and a chief, put two men on, I'm gonna have to make them, I mean, you can work them where they safe, like they came up. Those men, the Sheriff's Department, we pay taxes to the Sheriff's Department. They have a patrol department to patrol the whole parish. The biggest municipality in this parish in Bastard, okay? And they're paid already to patrol Bastard. There's no reason that Bastard should be paying them a dime, okay? Chief, if you, if you have a, someone, a shootout at 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 second, at second Bastard, who gonna come and assist you? Uh if you call for them, the Sheriff's Department, state police, right? You got, you got, you got assets to all that, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, why are we paying them? That's the question, let's start kicking this can.
Okay.
And make that department do, the chief, you tell me that they, you call for the Sheriff's Department and they don't come, you let me know, okay? You call me, you have my personal number, I think, you call me, call, I know who to call to give them that, or get somebody to give.
Bradford, they come, they gonna come.
They gonna call, but why are we paying them then? You just have to, because they have, they got, they are obligated on our tax dollars to patrol the city of Bastard. This is with two foot. And I don't intend to, both on a budget, give the Sheriff's Department one red dime of this upcoming budget. Because it's ridiculous to continue to do that. And chief, you use what you got, and if you need backup, if they don't call, call the state police. All, you got assets, all, all those departments, all those agents work together, okay? And we, and this city, uh for what, uh, we ain't got, we ain't got some teenagers acting clown shooting. But uh at night, you know, we more burglary and stuff than anything. Uh our city with a, uh, we need assistance, chief, you know how to do, you know the code, they got all kinds of code. They make the code, they got more codes than zip code. Uh, but they got codes that to get this done, and we are being, we are being scammed, okay? And we need to stop this, because it's a shame, we need that money to pay the recruit. An increase of a pay raise for the fire, police, across the board, even the janitor. I'm gonna tell you that like that, if we stop and fade reality, we can, we can, we can have an increase across the board. Even the council can get a raise. I'm starting somehow, you too, man. But we, and we, we got here, listen, listen about this. They already getting paid, our tax dollars, everybody getting paid parataxia, raise your hand. Is that, okay, you paying for your protection? What's the path for me? Okay, I'm sorry.
Let's, let's give, uh, Mr. Jay Green, you wanted to say something, Miss Tapping, did you? Okay, what about you? Uh, Mr. Dee Dee Green? Okay, now, I think Ms. Ms. Mrs. Tapping made a motion to come back in a week's time. Now, we are working to the last minute, trying to get the last deal in, so we can give you the most precise budget. Considering all the outstanding, that's why I don't like to put information out there that's not accurate. Or doesn't have the, all, as much information as you need. But is your motion still on the floor?
Yes, ma'am, and and it's not for everything, it's just for the vital things that we were talking about tonight.
So, specifically, so that would mean what, Mrs. Tapping?
We are requesting for a new budget for twenty officers, give us an amount.
Okay, so, we will set a meeting at the appropriate time, Mr. Goldman, we'll take care of.
That think that twenty officers at a new rate?
That's what you want, okay?
With benefits, okay?
Thank you for your special.
Can, can we go ahead and set a date while everybody's here?
Okay, uh, when you look at your calendars and see.
Can we possibly do it like that Thursday where it can be in the, uh, in in the paper? It's five thirty, okay with y'all?
Five thirty, next Thursday.
Gonna be the twenty-second at five thirty.
And that's specifically to look at, uh, scheduling twenty officers. Twenty officers, okay, then we have to look at all.
Well, I think the Assistant Chief said twenty, well, including the dispatches, is that what you said, Assistant Chief?
Twelve for patrol, two detectives, two administrators, and dispatch.
What he said.
Okay, so specifically, what's gonna be, what we're gonna talk about next Thursday? Is as what Mrs. Tapping said, looking at the, the twenty slots encompassing in various positions. How much that will come?
Can I add to, can you, I was, I was just gonna get the budget, uh.
Why don't I, why don't I, I can, I can do that, uh, give you a copy, then we'll have it delivered to y'all in the morning.
I can, people have to be even.
Well, it doesn't matter, just, I, I, we want to deliver it in the morning to you.
So that could be taken care of tomorrow.
Yeah, I just make a copy.
Okay, all right, so Mrs. Tapping has a, a motion on the floor that is quite specific. I think that that's gonna be in courtesy of everybody's time, and we won't be going on and on. Is there a second?
Second, I'll do the second.
Okay.
Did you say?
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Tapping, a second by, uh, Mr. D. Green and.
You, you can give it to the vision. They can give it, you can give it to the vision.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carried. All right, next Thursday, and I believe that covers, uh, everything on the, this. I would say brief agenda. I, I have one announcement that I, I didn't have, I didn't make. Is the Morehouse reunion is going on, and it will take place at the end of this month. So we certainly want to, uh, welcome, we have a lot of visitors in town and trusting that they will be shopping in our local restaurants. And using our accommodations, so we're trying to get the city ready for, for all of the influx of visitors coming to the Morehouse reunion. All right, at this time, I'm returning a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion.
I'll be moved by.
Jay Green, Jay Green, Green, Green.
We, 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 we gotta have a, the difference between the two Greens, Jay Green.
More to have to call, more to what we call the D's number.
Okay, all in favor, uh, any opposed?